I'd like to call this council work session and regular council meeting to order. Everybody please rise for a moment of silence. And let's remember a true leader of our community who passed away, Carla Reynolds, the other day unexpectedly. Everybody knows that she did a lot for this town and the community. I was fortunate enough that she chose to honor me a year ago at one of her events. She's truly going to be missed, and I know that she was a true leader for this town. So let's remember her in our prayers and everyone else who passed away during the month Please salute the flag. Yes, Mr. Paza.
Here.
Ms. Collins. Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Cousins.
Here.
Ms. Figueroa.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Cotroche, Mayor.
Mr. G. Buzo.
Kurt. Okay, we have a few organizations here tonight, so we're going to start with the Puerto Rican Cultural Association. Lucy, you're going to come up and speak as the president of the association.
You can come up. I'm going to read my recent case study so I don't go over the time that I have.
You've got one minute.
One minute. Okay.
Yeah, take as much time as you need.
Thank you. Buenas noches. Good evening, everyone. My name is Luz Ruiz. I am a resident of Bristol Borough. I am the president of the Puerto Rican Cultural Association of Bucks County. I am here to let you know that the association is proud to be hosting the Puerto Rican Day Festival of Bristol. A celebration to gather as a family to share our rich traditions and strengthen communities. This event aims to support and acknowledge the diverse expressions within our cultural, artistic, and gastronomic communities. The festival will be Saturday, July 26th, with a rain day of July 27th. It will take place at the Bristol Waterfront Park from 12:00 to 8:00 p.m. In addition, we are here to invite everyone to this exciting community event. Mr. Mayor Raffi D. De Sepey III, all members of the council, Bristol Borough manager, Mr. James Dillon, and staff, as well as all residents of Bristol, again, are invited. The festival will highlight live performances by three freestyle artists. Their names are Goro, Betty D. of Sweet Sensation, and Abby Cruz of TKN. It will feature a performance by Danza Fiesta, an internationally recognized New York-based folk dance company. Danza Fiesta will present a 50-minute performance where they will transport the public on a musical journey through the rhythms and dances of our bomba and plena. Jimmy Jorge and the Latin Express, a professional salsa band based out of Philadelphia, will get attendees dancing to the lively sound of salsa music deeply rooted in Cuban and Puerto Rican musical traditions. It will also showcase impressive dance performances by Shekina Dance Ministry and Rhythmos Unidos Dance Groups, two dance groups that are local from Bristol. DJ June Abiles will provide a mix of music blending Latino styles to keep participants engaged and dancing until sunset.
Woo-hoo!
Additionally, our itinerary will include a variety of children's activities such as face painting, hula hooping, performance, and a class. The children will be invited to learn about the rich history of Puerto Rican percussion instruments rooted in Taino, Spanish, and African influences. Examples of these instruments are the güiro. Here I show the picture of the güiro, the maracas, the pandaritas, and the bomba tron. Each contributing to the distinctive sound of Puerto Rican music like what Danza Fiesta is going to be performing, danza and plena. There will be a variety of food vendors to choose from, offering a tropical cuisine rich in a combination of cultural influences and flavors, and novelty vendors offering unique products that attendees may not be able to purchase elsewhere. And we want to support these vendors. They really, really need our support. Again, everyone is welcome to celebrate, dance, salsa, until sunset. Have fun and take lots of pictures.
Thank you.
Just like Bad Bunny says.
Weepa!
Debemos tomar más fotos. We must take many pictures. We must take a lot of pictures. Again, everyone is welcome to celebrate. And to conclude, I would like to thank Mr. Mayor D. De Sepey III, Borough Manager Mr. Dillon, Council President Mr. De Sepey, and other council members for their consideration and support.
Thank you.
And hope to see you all at the 54 Puerto Rican Day Festival.
Okay, Amanda is here from Woman's Place.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Stefano from Woman's Place, the Rapid Rehousing Manager. I was here last year to present "Paint the Town Purple." We've done it a few times in Bristol. Woman's Place is the only domestic violence agency in the county of Bucks County. I'm a former resident of Bristol Borough, so it's very imperative for me to have our area obviously bring awareness and represent victims of domestic violence. So as you may remember, as you can see, down Mill Street, right around Market Street, by the waterfront, tying ribbons on September 27th, our volunteers will come out, put them up, and we'll take them back down by November 1st. Just really want to highlight October and again, bring awareness to our cause and help whoever we can. Lower Bucks has a very big need for that, so would love to just obviously show that support and be there to let them know we're here for them as well.
And we want you to know you're always welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate it very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Paza.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of council. I know the protocol usually is that we only have public participation from residents, usually, but a friend of mine dropped in unexpectedly, and with your permission, I'd like to introduce the 16th President of the United States, Abraham Lincoln.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, in his moments like this, and I'm reminded of a certain politician out in Illinois who was constantly running for office. No sooner had he attained one office than he'd wind himself up and start running for the next one. Consequently, he spent a lot of time traveling from town to town, making speeches, kissing babies, and eating free dinners. One night, he found himself in a little town, eating the dinner, when it occurred to him that he could not remember the name of the town he was in. He thought about it, and thought about it, and pushed the peas around on the plate. Finally had to give up, leaned over to his campaign manager, and whispered, "Where the devil am I?" Campaign manager leaned back in his chair and puffed on his cigar and said, "My job is to tell you who you are. You've got to figure out where you are." Well, I don't have that problem tonight. I know where I am. I've been here before. I've been asked to deliver a few appropriate remarks, and I've taken a precaution of writing them down. So I've got it all right here. Greetings, it says. My name is Abraham Lincoln, for those of you who don't recognize me. 16th President of the United States, and I'm pleased to see my picture hanging above you along George Washington. This is my third visit to Bristol Borough. The first was in late February of 1861, when my train stopped here briefly to allow me to address a crowd of about 1,000 people who had assembled in anticipation of my arrival. It was my only stop in Bucks County. All along my trip from Springfield, Illinois to Washington, I made about 93 stops, and each time I spoke of my hope for unity. But while unity was in my heart, I knew the reality was bleak. Seven states had already left the Union with more to follow, and the most feared civil war was on the horizon. My second visit came in April of 1865, when my funeral train passed new town and hundreds of people gathered along the tracks to say goodbye. Those speeches were expected. So given all that, I must say that this will surely be my favorite visit. I'm here to announce that Bristol Borough, the civic group Raising the Bar, and this council and mayor and your state representative Tina Davis have seen fit to create a monument to commemorate my first visit. I'm told that the site will be a unique combination of history, art, and oratory. The project will be completed this week, and the dedication ceremony will be on Tuesday, July 22nd, at 6:30 p.m. Everyone is welcome to attend and celebrate another part of Bristol Borough's history. Thank you for your time.
I think Abe pretty much summed it up. Any questions for Abe? He did sum it up. On Tuesday, 22th of July, at 6:30, we're going to be dedicating the monument that we've been working extremely hard on. I have a, there's a Raising the Bar board member here in the back, Alan Hermally. You guys know him. We have an excellent board of people who really bring a myriad of skills together, and I think we're going to be very proud of what you're going to see. So the figurines that symbolized the 1,000 people that showed up to hear Abe that day are going to be installed on Friday, okay? And the ceremony then will be on Tuesday. So thank you for all your participation, all your help, all your cooperation. I want to thank the people of the public who responded so well. I mean, this project is funded, half from government funding, and the other half by just donations from people from everywhere in town, and it was really heartening. So we're excited. We want to invite everyone to come. We're going to have the Men of Harmony singing some songs. We're going to have Keith Spencer from the Bristol Riverside Theater doing a Negro spiritual. We're going to have Keith Baker reciting "Oh Captain, My Captain," the iconic poem that was written by Walt Whitman after President Lincoln's death. And we're also going to have a local resident reading the Gettysburg Address, which is short and very well done. So this is going to be not just something you walk up and look at once. It's going to be interactive. You're going to be able to, I told you before, hit a QR code, and you'll be able to hear Councilman Lee Cousin as one of the eight people who will be activated when you want to hear the speeches that they make. So it's going to be fun. We think it's going to be the best marriage of history and art, unique art, in Bucks County. So something we should be proud of. I think the town will be proud of. And again, thank you for your support. You might want to look at, was it Agenda Item Number 5? We would appreciate that as well, your attention. So thank you.
So before you leave, Abe, why don't you come up with, Bill, Mr. Cotroche has something for you too. Kurt, you want to get a couple of pictures for Amanda?
So we know you're always in a hurry, so we're not going to wait for Agenda 5. Okay. We're going to present. You're going to present this check to Raising the Bar for $5,000 for the council and borough's contribution to the project. Thank you very much, and thank you, President Lincoln.
Thank you very much for your generosity. It'll be well spent. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to open up public participation, so. I'm going to open up public participation. Anybody on this side of the room who would like to speak on anything, go to the podium and state your name and address? Anybody on this side of the room? That ends public participation. Okay. Penny, you're first?
I'd like to, we talked about Carla earlier this evening. I just wanted to recognize her again and just let everybody know that she started "Roots on the Ground," which was big and dear to her heart. She also gave me an award a couple of years ago when she started, which, you know, was very nice of her. And today, I went to her viewing, and her daughter, I let her know that we were all thinking about her. If everybody could please just keep this family in their prayers. It was just an unexpected horrific accident, and she worked really hard to help the community. So we appreciate it, and in the future, we're looking to bring in her daughter to recognize her mother. Another thing is, we're doing He-Body Night. He-Body Night is something that comes before Puerto Rican Day. It's going to be, it's called Flag, it's Raising of the Flag. So that's going to be Flag, is that Flag Raising, I'm sorry, is Saturday, July 19th, at 5:30, outside of Bristol Borough, right here in Municipal Building. And it's called He-Body Night, because afterwards, when they raise the flag and they do their little thing, they go to the river and they have a little, like, party, kind of showing old-style foods and stuff, desserts, mostly desserts, that, you know, people can come and enjoy. And that's just the beginning of what comes the following week, which is Puerto Rican Day. And we take that big, and we take a lot of pride in it. So I just wanted to, you know, let everybody know that. It will be on the website also. We're going to put it on there. I suppose to Craig Whitaker today, and it's going to be on there. So everybody, please take the time to come to He-Body Night. And I think that's it. Woman's Place, she left, but that's a big organization, and it's really good, because you know what? We need that kind of foundation in our community. And that's it. That's it. That's it.
Lee? Oh, I have nothing. Louie?
I wanted to thank the leaders of Unity Day. It was, I'm watching the news that night. Channel 6 had the unity, was down there with the cameras, and it was a nice, nice spin on the Wharf area, so I want to thank them for a good job that they've done. The other thing that I wanted to bring out is, ever since the, you know, there's been this issue with the docks. And, you know, I'd always go by, no matter I'm one stopped at the corner there, I'd look down and see the boats in the docks. And lately, there have been fewer and fewer boats there. Most of the time, it's empty. And this is a shame, and I know they talk about the 26-foot longer boats because of the revenue that the state gets for that fishing game on gas sales. But a friend of mine who's a boater said there is not a gas, there's not a gas facilitating station from U.S. Steel down to the Navy Yard. So it's below the Navy Yard is the only spot in Pennsylvania on the Delaware River in our area that supplies gas. Now, on the New Jersey side, there's curtains, and Delanco, there's a couple of gas stations there. So it really has hurt us. I think it's hurt the town, because there were a lot of boaters there, and word must get out that they're not going to be welcomed here. And that's a shame, because it was a good add-on to the Wharf. And I think we need to do something. We need to address this with the state. Even I've got complaints, people are all disappointed that there won't be a tall ship at Bristol Day. That was always a draw for some people, besides, you know, being the star of Bristol Day. It was always nice to see the tall ships, so they take their kids and their grandkids down to the Wharf, and it was a real plus. I think we just have to continue with the state government to get some relief on this program. That's all I have.
I really don't have anything. I just want to be, to tell every, remind everyone that if you have any concerns or complaints, do not hesitate to either contact myself or Brian through email. And that's basically it. I just want to remind everyone.
Brian, you have anything?
I have none.
I'm sorry. Greg?
I just had a quick question. Well, first of all, I want to say, in the context of the tragedy in Texas, I think there, first of all, you know, obviously, what a terrible thing, and we're thinking about the people down there, but I also think there are a lot of parallels to our own community, considering we are a waterfront community. The weather is changing rapidly. We have flooding in the parking lot. I would first like to say, I know a lot of their alert systems are under scrutiny, and I can say, I think with pretty strong confidence, that I appreciate what our mayor had done about a year and a half, two years ago, in really pushing hard for our NICSIL program, which, you know, alerts us. I mean, I don't know about you guys, but the other night when we had that thunderstorm, I got like seven calls in a row, which is great. So I am glad to see that we have been proactive in that. I would just ask that we obviously stay proactive in that, because it just seems like, you know, we live on a river that floods a little bit, but I feel like the people that were living down in Texas kind of felt the same way, like, eh, floods occasionally, and then boom, you know? And I'm sure AJ obviously has that on his mind as well, and I know Merle always did. But I would just ask that we be vigilant, obviously, in that circumstance. And then with that, I just had a quick question for either Amanda or Kurt. We got a very thorough report from you guys, and really appreciate that, about the work you guys have been doing over the last couple of months, and the Green Lane flood study. So Green Lane is one of those areas that does really concern me, because that comes quickly, if it comes, and we've had to close it a number of times. And I know we did a, you know, we camered it, we, and then we sought some help from the state, because it is their road, about replacing the piping and putting in some gates to close it, should there be some sort of flash flood. Do we know when the, like, what our last, where that stands, I guess, is my question?
So kind of the last conversation we had with PennDOT was, they are taking the stance that it's the borough's responsibility to maintain the storm piping, even though it is a state road. And that's not just a Bristol Borough thing, that is across all boroughs in the state. We do not agree with that stance. As you know, you've been through quite a few of the conversations at this point. They did say that they would support a grant application if the borough made it to the state for some grant funding for this project. It is a large project. There is not a lot of grant programs that will frankly cover the entire cost of the construction, but there are a few programs that we're looking into at this point. Again, there's not many for actual stormwater infrastructure by way of piping. A lot of the grant programs that are out now are for naturalized and vegetation, those types of watershed projects. So we're keeping an eye on it to see which ones we can apply for, while still holding the stance that we don't think that the borough should be responsible for replacing this entire pipe.
And I would assume, should someday we were to secure that funding, that that is a project that would shut Green Lane down for a while? Is that true?
It likely would. We could probably have some sort of, you know, traffic pattern set up that one lane was open at times. I would imagine there's a point in time we'd have to close the road for portions of the work. And hopefully, that would not, that would time well with the Randall Avenue situation, but I think that one might be open at some point.
Randall Avenue, the end of the year? Yeah, and that was something I was wondering about as well. And then I guess maybe, maybe it's a question for our solicitor. Do we have any recourse with the state to say we disagree with you, and, you know, we think we should challenge that, or?
Well, you'd have to file a predatory judgment actually coming to court in order to proceed to get opinion in that regard, because you haven't spent any money, so you can't recover the money. So some of you might want to explore when Amanda returns from her event.
A three-month event.
Yes, okay.
And it is, you know, again, this isn't a Bristol Borough issue, so we would essentially be going up against the state for something that is a statewide policy at this point.
But a policy that we don't think has been moved on yet necessarily?
No, it's their opinion.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Amanda, we already received like $60,000 grant for this study.
For the scope.
Correct. The study was funded with grant funding through Pima.
Right.
All right.
And Green Lane is partially in Bristol, Kentucky, so they're actively helping us pursue this.
Okay. All right. I just, well, first of all, Chief, I apologize. Do you have anything?
Just have one thing. Just want to announce, on behalf of the mayor and I, we want to announce our fourth annual 2025 National Writeout, which is going to be on Tuesday, August 5th, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. in the rear of Snyder Girardi Elementary School. Going to feature members of local law enforcement, the local fire departments, local EMS, all of our equipment. Will be out there, the police vehicles and all their equipment, the fire trucks, EMS equipment. There'll be health and resource information, two bouncy houses, games, face painting, and a DJ. There's going to be some free food and refreshments, and it will be a great time for everybody in Bristol Borough.
What's the date again?
It will be Tuesday, August 5th.
Thank you.
And again, the theme will be school supplies, so if I need a borough of children to come, we'll be able to pick up school supplies for...
We always had last year.
And what time will that be, Joe? What time?
5:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
So on August 5th, 5:30 to 8:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The mayor is on, away for work. He's got to be away every month, so it fell on this council meeting. AJ, you have anything?
So, excuse me, in regards to the flooding and your concerns, excuse me, over the last two years, the Bristol Borough Fire Department has really upped our cache of marine rescue equipment with regards to rope rescue, marine rescue. We bought a new boat, all the suits. We spent roughly four hours yesterday training with the Corrigan Fire Company up in the Penn Warner area on all sorts of water rescue. So we have a highly motivated team of firefighters that are well-trained for water rescue, and we will be going back next month and the following month as well, just doing more water rescue training.
Awesome. Thank you. I would just also like to say, I would use that opportunity to say that you should sign up for NICSIL if you have not done so yet, which is the warning system to get. Chief, do you know the code? I don't know it off the top of my head. We'll get it out.
It's very simple.
It's on the website.
On the website.
On the website. Okay. So sign up for the NICSIL emergency service on our website. Thank you.
Okay. AJ, I just want to say you're doing an outstanding job. Merle recommended you. Merle, when Merle recommended you, we didn't even question it, but you're beyond my expectations, so keep up the good work. One thing I just want to talk about trash cans, because I don't know, I find it, I never heard so much about a trash can in my life. Why is it red? Why is it this? Why is it this size? If you don't like it, don't pick it up. You don't have to use it. We don't care if you use it or you don't use it. Use your old can. Call the Borough, call Mascara, we will pick it up. I mean, Mascara, their colors are red. They're not going to repaint all their trucks, just like Waste Management is green. They're not going to repaint their trucks a different color. And I know they're big. There's people that don't want a big trash can. That's fine. You don't need, you don't need to keep this can. If you do not want it, it's very simple. Call Mascara, email Mascara, call the Borough, the Borough will do what they have to do. Whatever it takes, we will pick up the can.
And the good thing is that you don't have to separate anything. Before, you had to separate it. Now, you can put it all on there, paper, bottles, cans, all those things.
This is a program that Mascara enforced. This is the same program that other townships are enforcing. They have a recycle can. People said, why don't the arm pick it up? Who don't want the arm? It doesn't matter. Just put it out like you did anything else. If you're unhappy with it, don't stress out over a trash can. There was 50-some people out of 4,000 cans that were delivered that we went and picked up. There may be a little bit more now, but, you know, if there's 100 people that are unhappy, that's fine. We'll pick them up. If you still need it, then there's people that want more cans. So, Mara and the girls in the office are doing their best to help with this situation. But to stress out over a trash can, to me, is mind-boggling. There's so many more important things in life than worry about a recycle can. So, if you don't want it, fine, we'll pick it up, and we'll bring it to the Borough. And you know the old cans, the little blue round ones? If you don't want them, I'll take them. I use them for work. Put them in my driveway. I don't have to go buy them. Put them in my driveway. I may have 100 cans tomorrow. A guy knocked on my door, he said, what do I do with these two cans? I don't want them. I said, leave them in my driveway. I use them. I know a lot of contractors.
Careful with wishwords.
That's okay. Maybe I'll, hey, I'll take them all.
Mr. President, sorry. The mayor just texted me that the NICSIL is 88, so you text Bristol Borough, one word, Borough being B-O-R-O. So, it's Bristol Borough, B-O-R-O, to 888-777, if you have not done that yet.
Okay.
It's a great thing to have. I get my alerts all the time.
All right. I think we covered everything.
I think so.
We get into our regular meeting. Anybody in the public want to speak on anything?
I just wanted to put on the record, the RDA will be asking the Borough for applications for funding, probably in September, so if anybody has any ideas, capital items, I know Public Works is asking for a PACO, and Police Chief is looking for a police vehicle at the moment, and I did see an email late this afternoon, or this evening, from our fire chief about certain items he'd like. So, if anybody has any ideas, maybe in the next month or so, if you can get them to us. Thank you.
Okay. Jeff, you have anything?
Well, I'll mention it when we get down to number seven on the agenda.
Okay. All right. So, I need a motion on number two.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the council meeting minutes for June 9th of 2025, the treasurer's report for May of 2025, the fire chief's report for June 2025, inspection report for June of 2025, police report for June 2025, Public Works report for June 2025, Harv report for June of 28th, 2025, and the Gilmore report dated July 20, or July 2025, for the June 2025 work.
Second by Mrs. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, number three.
Mr. President, I'd like to, sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the identification agreement between the Borough and PICO for the purpose of constructing the Borough's MS4 project behind Houshne.
Second by Mrs. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, number three.
Mr. President, I can make a motion to approve the additional scope of work at the track for Gilmore's memo dated June 17th, 2025, with the amount of $256,750.
Second by Mr. Cousin, questions or comments? The only thing I'd like to comment on is that we had a meeting with the school board, Senate Committee here, myself, Amanda was here, Mr. Dylan. We talked about every project we always did in town. We always make sure we did the project right. The school board agreed to this additional funding, so they're going to spend, they're going to give us $130,000 towards the project at their next meeting. Don't ratify it and vote for it. From what I understand, I think, I don't know if they're all in favor of it or not, but they agreed on this. The business manager was also here. So, they're coming up with $130,000. They don't have it in this year's budget, so we told them, whatever you want to do, you want to pay us over one year, two years, five years, and so they're going to work it out. Their solicitor will get in touch with Mr. Barton, and we'll have something. I told them, a boat from them is just as good, a handshake, but they bought into the project to do it the right way. So, it's going to be a beautiful track. Amanda, when they going to start?
Maybe late August.
Late August? Okay. Shouldn't take them long to do it either, right? Maybe a month or so? Amanda won't be here next, she don't want to be here next.
Unfortunately, not be here to oversee it.
Unfortunately.
Maybe I'll do a little drive-by.
Take the baby with you.
Right. The contractor's thinking a start for late August. The longest portion of the work would involve the actual asphalt underlayment under the track surface itself, so they do have to mill that out, take a look at it, inspect it, and then do probably a full overlay of asphalt. That then has to sit for 30 days. So, you're going to see them go away for a full month, essentially, then come back and do the track surface. So, that's, that's kind of the longest portion of the project.
And the school board, all the members that were here, I don't want to speak for the whole board, said they'll play field hockey on the football field.
Right. Yeah, it is going to kind of mess up their field hockey logistics for the season, but they, they're aware of it, and they said they would relocate them.
What's going to be nice now, like, right now, from what I understand, you're looking across the field near the tracks, you don't know who won the race, who didn't win the race. Now, they're going to finish on Trenton Avenue side.
Right.
Which the parents and everybody's going to be, you know, you can see all this. So, it's going to be nice. And I want to thank the track coach.
Yeah, Ron.
Ron, what's his name?
McGinn. Thank you.
And Angelo Catroci for all their hard, they did a lot of work to get this track to where it is and make recommendations, so.
Yeah, they were great, and they also, you know, recommended if we could move the long jump and triple jump events into the center of the infield of the track, because right now, again, I think we spoke about it last month, but they're behind the bleachers again on the far, far side of the track. So, now, you know, parents and spectators will be able to see the kids actually participate in the events.
And the track's supposed to last 25 years. There's a maintenance program that the school board hopefully will maintain it every year or have it inspected, just like we do with the docks, so.
Okay.
Okay? So, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to table motion number five.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number six.
Mr. President, I can make a motion for the approved donation of $5,000 to assist in the construction of the Abraham Lincoln Memorial.
Second by Mr. Catroci, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to have Mr. Gardner frame the motion.
If I may, before I do that, the council was in executive session for about an hour before the meeting today. One item was a discussion of collective bargaining negotiations with UAW Local 1612. The other part of the discussion had to do with personnel matters. Motion should be to approve the five-year contract with UAW Local 1612 and authorize the council president to sign the agreement when the final numbers are calculated to be inserted in the agreement.
So, that's the motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Catroci, questions or comments? The only comment I would like to make is, this is almost a two-year battle to try to get, not battle, but try to get this resolved on both parts. We finally reached an agreement that the council's happy with, and the employees are happy with. I think it benefits our two-tier employees a lot, that we're trying to bring them up to better pay, as long as they agree, and the numbers, once Angie plugs in the numbers, and I sign it, and they sign it, we want to get them their money as fast as possible. So, hopefully, we can get this done in the next week or so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? One more thing before we adjourn? Well, two things. One, don't forget, if you don't want your trash can, come and get it. But more importantly is, we may not meet before August 18th, but if we don't meet, St. Anne, St. Mark Carnival is on Monday, August 18th to August 23rd. It's a major fundraiser for St. Mark's School and Church, so Father Mooney depends on this, and I'm asking everybody to come out in town and support this carnival. It's a good cause, it's a lot of fun, it's a lot of food for everybody, so come out and support Father Mooney and St. Anne and St. Mark Church on August 18th to the 23rd. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Second by Mairead. All in favor?
Aye.